Please rise, do the pledge of allegiance and then open your seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rush County Schools' vision statement: Achieve personal excellence through a wide range of educational challenges and opportunities. Before we start, I'd like to ask for a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening. So...
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Jameson, any request for a public comment?
Mr. President, per school board policy, there is a request for public comment. Mrs. Madison Newman wishes to address the board. Per board policy, she will have two minutes to speak.
Mrs. Newman?
I have some things for you, if you'd like me to hand them out.
Sure.
Sure.
Doesn't matter where I stand.
That's right.
Good evening, board members, and Mr. Newman. My name is Madison Newman, and I've had the pleasure of being the assistant coach at RCHS for the past few years. I'm here today to discuss my wrongful termination as assistant coach by Melissa Winkler and Warren Cook due to false allegations, lobbying, and intimidation to say I resign. Ms. Winkler and Mr. Cook signed a hand meeting with them on June 28th. They asked me to not return for the upcoming season citing a group's accusations and the justification for not returning. I am devastated. Athletes and I have previously talked about their hopes and wishes for the upcoming season. It would be a bold lie for me to turn around and say I'm resigning like I was asked to do. She determined to me based on evidence and ungrateful claims that were not necessary. Ms. Winkler and Mr. Cook threatened to intimidate me with crazy allegations that were quietly fading in the background, hoping with the fear of these allegations getting out and possibly tarnishing my reputation would keep me quiet. I am looking ahead. I gladly hand over every single aspect of my life for it to be open to investigation just to demonstrate the false views of these allegations. My father-in-law David Newman has been an esteemed basketball coach in this community for decades. I've held the entire RCHS community and the RCHS athletic department in high regard because of his stories and experience. This situation has forced me to reevaluate everything, including if I want to raise my family here and continue operating my business here. The members of administration will basically accuse it individually of egregious allegations and then intimidate them to try and say they resign, leaving out that investigation and these claims actually should rise. My godson is African-American, my uncle is African-American. My life's work is working with children and young adults with disabilities. Determining me as a coach based on the allegations reported is quite literally the furthest thing from the truth, undermining my entire 29 years on the surface. I am grateful of the current informed assets and their parents who have independently decided to write letters regarding their thoughts on this matter on their own accord. I truly hope you take the time to read them, as these athletes and their parents have taken the time to have their opinions considered. I'm asking for a thorough investigation to be made into the accusations that Ms. Winkler and Mr. Cook are giving upon me, resulting in my removal from the position. I truly appreciate your time and attention to this matter, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, moving on. Tell me something good. Mrs. Mastin, Arlington Elementary.
Good evening. I am up here by myself this evening. Mr. Zachary is coaching basketball, so hopefully they're doing well or do well as they play this evening. I am going to honor Ms. Brianna Saxon first. We would be here all night if I told you all of the good things that there could be told about Ms. Saxon. Some of her colleagues said the following. Brianna sees every challenge as an opportunity to learn and grow. Brianna's willingness to adapt to any situation is to be admired. Brianna's relationships with her students help them to feel valued and respected in their classroom. Brianna has a positive attitude and makes learning fun. She has built positive relationships with all of her students. She works well with others and is open to suggestions. She is willing to commit extra time after school to meet with other teachers so that she can be mentored. She creates a safe educational environment for her students, and she always wears a smile. Brianna is a first-year teacher, and she is incredible. Any student would be lucky to be in her classroom. She really loves her kiddos, and she works hard. That first statement about learning and growing, that's all she does. She's constantly open to feedback. Anytime she's provided with feedback when you're in her classroom the next time, it's there. And so I am very honored to get to work with her every day, very proud of her, and we are super excited to have her as a wildcat. This sweet girl is Raylin Palmerly, and as you can see, she has the sweetest smile. She is enthusiastic and engaged. She participates in her classroom. She is always eager to learn. Her kindness is exceptional. She actively supports her peers and helps anyone who may be struggling. Raylin's compassion extends to everyone around her. As a quiet leader, she consistently follows directions and demonstrates strong listening skills. Her infectious smile lights up every day at Arlington Elementary, making a positive impact on all who encounter her. She is obviously a very special little girl, and the way that she treats other people is something that everyone around her can learn from, adults and children alike. Ms. Raylin Palmerly.
Good year. Mrs. Wilson, Millroy Elementary.
All right, well, I have the honor of recognizing our student of the month, and that is Ms. Jody Mahan. And Jody was nominated by her teacher, Mrs. Byrne. And Mrs. Byrne had these wonderful things to say about her. She said that Jody exudes quiet confidence and a calm demeanor that makes her a natural leader. She has never encountered a challenge that she didn't face and conquer head-on. She is a friend to everyone and never hesitates to step up and lend a hand when help is needed. And I can speak to the help that she offers. She's a part of our Cardinal News crew, and she was one of the first people that volunteered. Sometimes we say voluntold, right? But she was a willing participant to start writing those, and that was something, that was a big help. And they've just kind of taken on a whole different thing, and so announcements have really come a long way with Jody's help. And I know that she does always have a smile on her face when we see her, but she does. It's that quiet leader, so we are glad to have her. So she embodies all of our Cardinal pride principles in her daily life and her actions. So congratulations, Jody.
I want to add too with Jody. She not only is part of Millroy Elementary, but she's also involved in extracurricular activities, one of our elves' club contest winners, right? And went pretty far, so she does a lot of things outside school, too. Okay, so I have the pleasure of talking about Abby Herbert. She is an instructional assistant for us at Millroy, and Abby's an asset to our school. Each day she walks in with a bright smile and a positive attitude. Her gentle and calm demeanor creates an environment that allows our students to feel safe at school, and they can really thrive. Abby handles each situation with compassion and grace. And one of her colleagues said she isn't afraid to quietly take initiative when she sees something that needs to be done, and she has a willingness to take on any task, no matter how challenging it is. Abby's genuine kindness makes her a joy to be around, and the ripple effect of her kindness enhances our school. When you walk away after a conversation with Abby, you walk away with a smile on your face. She's a true gem, so congratulations.
RAS.
Who wants to go first? All right. So here I have Memphis, who we are super excited to celebrate as our primary student of the month. This is from his teacher, Ms. Adams, and Ms. Rennebaum. And it says that Memphis has made tremendous growth, not only in his academic goals, but also his behavioral goals. He has begun to read words. He is more independent in his math work and has grown leaps and bounds with being able to identify what bothers him and how he can fix it. From August to now, Memphis has excelled in independence, and as a result, he is happy, caring, and inclusive to all around him. He's a joy to work with and always has a happy face in class. And I see Ms. Mary here. I can remember when Memphis started reading, and Ms. Mary had tears to her eyes. Memphis has a wonderful, wonderful support system at RES. We are lucky to have him as a lion, so congratulations, Memphis. I just got a text from Ms. Mason while I was standing here, and she wanted me to tell you how proud of you she is. And she's sorry she couldn't be here. This is Colton. He is our intermediate student of the month. And Ms. Mason says, "Colton has been so much fun to have in class. He's always making everyone around him smile. No matter the day or circumstance, Colton remains positive and hardworking. He always tries his best in class and works extremely hard. Not only does he hold himself accountable at school, he also holds his friends and peers accountable as well. Not one day goes by without Colton reminding us to always find the positive in a situation. I enjoy having him in class, and I am so proud of his growth and determination to make the best choices at school. He has also become a team leader in basketball and has grown into a wonderful athlete. I'm very proud of him." And Ms. Wallace says, "Colton is always trying his best and working hard. He has been on his best behavior. I'm so proud of his efforts, and I love watching him do well. He has been awesome to have this year." So congratulations.
I have the honor of recognizing Mrs. Kaylee Gordon. Kaylee is a huge asset to RES and Rush County Schools. She goes above and beyond every single day for our students and staff. While we all see the amazing work she does, so many other things she does goes unnoticed. She is here every day offering support within every aspect of our building. Student support, staff support, classroom support, cafeteria support, transportation support. She is an advocate for all of our students and works hard to build positive relationships. I asked students to describe her. I heard, "Sweet, caring, kind, amazing, loving, awesome, hilarious, keeps people in line, happy, and helpful." Those words all describe her perfectly, and we love her so very much. I also have Mrs. Eki Bossi. We proudly recognize Mrs. Bossi for her exceptional dedication and passion as an esteemed educator. Her inventive teaching methods, enthusiasm for interdis... blech, interdisplis... displicenary, I can't even talk tonight. Learning and unwavering commitment to her students make her an inspiration to all. With a unique ability to blend science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, she fosters creativity, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills in her students. She creates an inclusive and engaging classroom where curiosity is encouraged. Mistakes are seen as learning opportunities, and every student feels empowered to explore and innovate. Her impact is not just in what she teaches, but how she ignites a lifelong love of learning. Thank you, Mrs. Bossi, for your dedication and incredible impact you make every day.
Mr. Bundy, BRMS.
So we're going to start with our staff member of the month, and that is Mr. Wise. He's not able to be here tonight because his son is being recognized at the Purdue basketball game as one of the Purdue peats. So Jake, I know that excited, that your eyes just shut up. That Purdue background. So he's not able to be here tonight. But some of the comments by people who nominated Mr. Wise. "Mr. Wise is one of the best social studies teachers I've had. I feel that he should get the reward because of how caring he is with his students at BRMS. Mr. Wise is very nice and cares for his students. He always tells us how great we are. Mr. Wise has been an amazing, inspiring teacher since I was in middle school. He truly cares about his students, treats them with respect, connects with them, and makes learning fun. My daughter has come home many times telling stories about Mr. Wise's class. I'm so thankful that she gets the opportunity to have him as a teacher. Mr. Wise is a great leader at BRMS. Mr. Wise is always in a good mood and always smiling in the hallways." So congratulations, Mr. Wise. Now, I've written the rules a little bit because we're supposed to have one student of the month, but our teachers refused to break the tie because we have two such awesome candidates. So they wanted to send both of them here to be recognized. So when we had the vote and discussion about this, two stood out, and I'm going to start with Jacob Harmon. Jacob works hard, completes his assignments, and advocates for himself when he has questions or struggles with the task in the classroom. Jacob is very hardworking and is kind to other students. Jacob is always willing to help. Jacob helps his peers and sees, when he sees some struggles, and helps me when I need something done. So Jacob, obviously, from the comments from students and staff there, you are very helpful with people in the classroom, support your fellow student, and actually make the classroom situation better, so congratulations. Jayden York is our second co-student of the month, I guess I should say. Jayden has an excellent attitude. Every day is willing to do the work necessary to be successful in the classroom. Jayden is a very hard worker and gets along with everyone in the class. Jayden is always so positive. I love the way he has a smile on his face. Jayden comes into class with a smile, is always positive and kind to everyone around him. He's determined to put in his best effort and complete all of his work 100% of the time. Jayden works hard in class each day, each and every day. He is always quiet, listening to the task at hand, and keeps... And keep working hard, Jayden. You're a pleasure to have in class, so that was my hint, so congratulations.
Mr. Cook, RCHS. Mr. Bundy, it's good to see you step out of the norm. Bring two great students up and celebrate them tonight. That was awesome. Before we get started, we're going to start with our student of the month. Before we get started, I do want to say that our boys' basketball team obviously is competing in the sectional tonight. Last report we got, they were behind at halftime, but they are playing the number 10 ranked team in the state of New Palestine High Schools. I always liked watching the boys compete, and we should have delayed the board meetings so we could all get up. Anyway, also, one other thing. We have pushed attendance all year, big, okay? We had our SAT testing today with our juniors. 100% of our junior class showed up today and tested and completed their test. As you mentioned, that's unheard of. I mean, but they all showed up, and that's... Liz is the testing coordinator at the high school, and I give her all that credit, so... But it was awesome. But we're going to start with our student of the month, and I'm going to hand it over to Liz a little bit here.
I'm going to have Austin Basman come on up, and then I'm also going to have Mr. Smith come on up because he's going to say a couple things about Austin as well. Austin, I also want you to notice you have some of your previous teachers. We have Ms. Scanlon, we have Ms. Nichols, we have Ms. Leon. So you have so many people that are so excited to see you here. Austin is a senior, and when I'm looking at these comments, I mean, holy cow. You have had so much growth within your high school career. I mean, we have, someone had said, "Austin was in my very first SRT class at RCHS, and the changes in him since that semester are amazing. The growth he demonstrates daily make him an excellent choice for student of the month. I have watched him change from an unwilling participant in his educational journey to a young man who has taken charge of his academics and embraced his gifts and abilities in construction classes. He has gained self-assurance and demonstrates it every day in his interactions with staff and peers. I am certain he will be successful in the future." I mean, there's two pages of comments, Austin. "Had the privilege of knowing Austin since his elementary school days. Austin has grown into such a kind, caring, and amazing young adult. He has matured greatly in the past two years and has become determined with his life goals. Truly enjoyed getting to know him and wish him the best." So I will give this to you, and you can read through this, but I also want to give Mr. Smith the chance to talk a little bit about the growth that he's seen and a little bit about you to everybody.
Okay, I'm Mr. Smith. This is my second year at Rushville, and I know this is probably your uncomfortable part. Anyway, I know, I came in late in the game, and I'm going to say this. I'm going to assume that your first year at Rushville was probably not as smooth as your last three. Is that fair to say? Anyway, another thing I want to say is, I teach construction and facility maintenance. We work with the facility people here, the maintenance people, the support staff, the custodians, the lunch people, and we are very fortunate to have the group of people that we have here. And on a constant basis, we go out and work with the maintenance guys, Brett and Terry and a bunch of guys, and they constantly request Austin to come out and help get the football field ready or whatever, you know, whether pressure washing, something, or whatever they're doing. And uniquely, after 39 years of teaching, I've encountered a lot of kids. And sometimes you remember kids because they weren't maybe your favorite. But Austin's kid I'll remember because he's one of my favorite. And, you know, I consider him a friend, and I think he's gonna, you know, his parents, you should be very proud. He's grown up, he's going to be successful. And one thing I'm going to say is, he, I don't know if he knows what he's wanting to do, but we're in the process of setting up an interview for Austin with the Ark America Lineman Apprenticeship Program to get him off, because I think that's an interest he has, and I think he'll do well. And I just want to say thanks for, Austin, for kind of setting an example. And he has one thing a lot of high school kids do not have, and that's maturity. And I think he conducts himself, you know, in a way that makes, you know, you proud that you have him around. So I want to thank Austin for being here tonight, and thank his parents for being here tonight and taking this in. Anyway, thank Austin.
Brett Smith and I go back a long way, almost 30 years now. His oldest daughter's named Emily, my oldest daughter's named Emily, his youngest daughter's named Anna, my youngest daughter's named Dana. So, and we go back a long way. We hired Brett on a year and a half ago, so it's been almost two years since he's been here, to make a huge difference. And it is a great honor for me, because of this relationship and what he does, to honor him as our staff member of the month. He had no idea this was going to happen. He had no idea. You can see, by the way, when he talks about Austin, when he presented to Edward, when Edward was up here as our student of the month, you can see how much he cares about kids and how much he does for kids and everything. And I've got four pages of comments. Don't worry that I'll get them. I had to go through and kind of decipher which one to go with. But we have four pages of comments. I'm just going to, I'm going to read one that really sums up everything that Brett Smith is about. And it says, and this was from you, Kristen.
I'm usually not that well-worded.
No, that's why I read it. So, "Brett has a special gift for helping students see and reach greater heights. He has been instrumental in developing the confidence in students and had previously struggled with school. The life lessons these students have gained are incredible. The students will be leaving high school with a newfound confidence and lifelong skills." And that is what he does every day. And Brett works hard with our kids. He works a lot with our special needs kids. He employs them. You see what he does for all kinds of kids. And he started the Unified Track Program here. So he is our Unified Track Coach, and he's building on that team this year. So in just the short time that he's been here, he has done so much, and he's done so much for kids. And like he said, he's been in this business 39 years now, and he's still going strong. He still cares about every kid that comes in his room. He completely overhauled his classroom, which is the wood shop, to make it into his construction room. And he does construction, building trades, and facility maintenance out of that room. He has made connections with the community to get donations for tools. All kinds of things have come in. And just what he does for our kids, I think that everybody in our school would agree. Not just that, the man has a story for everything, okay? And it's usually something that is based off a pretty humorous story, usually. So I always said Brett could be a stand-up comedian in another life, but he wouldn't do that. So I am extremely honored and proud to have my friend and my colleague Brett Smith as our staff member of the month here at Rushville.
Thank you. First time he's ever been speechless.
First time he's ever been speechless. So tonight I'm honoring three bus drivers and even though they are different and unique personalities, they all serve as special ed bus drivers for Rush County Schools. In no particular order, it's just how you're walking up here. Mona Sturworth, Chris Herbert and Mindy Heck. Let's say a few words. Shake hands and be a little businesslike. Thank you, Mona. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Andy. So these three, and you just chime in when you want, okay? I'm going to paint a picture here and do a little demonstration, okay? So, okay, so these three transport just about every special ed student across the county. So what could happen tomorrow, May, or it may be two weeks from now, we might have a student that lives just west of Andersonville and says, I need a ride. And I have these accommodations and I have this range of disabilities and we need special transportation. So I'll take it and I'll text these three girls and say, okay, where are we carving this at? And then we all just kind of discuss it and figure it out. And you know what their answer every time is? Yeah, we'll get it figured out. And they work hours upon hours safely transporting kids. And that example will probably happen tomorrow because it is just normal operating procedure. And then the next day it'll be a student in Raleigh. And then the next day it'll be a student south of Moscow. And then it'll be a student here in town. And then it'll be a limited schedule. It'll be a half day. It'll be a preschooler. It'll be a kindergartner that can't sit still. It'll be a, you know, a high school kid that's in a wheelchair. It'll be just the full gamut of what we, of this type of students that we educate here. And their answer is always yes. It's amazing. Yeah, so many. So to say they're heroes is quite an understatement. It really is. I really appreciate the three of you. And I know that sometimes I'm very businesslike and I get serious and I'm detached sometimes because I'm managing the big picture, but like, please know, you three are really appreciated for what you do every day. It's selfless and it needs to be celebrated more often. So thank you, Chris. Chris, you got a stand-up act you want to do real quick?
Yeah.
You break, jump up, hey.
Oh, yeah, you should. All right, board comments. We'll start with Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you for the folks that are here today and tonight. We appreciate your time and investing in not only the students, but also staff members as well. Heard that ability will take you to the top, but it's character that keeps you there. And I'm thankful for the character that's wanted displayed tonight. Because a gift that you guys have given us and given each other is a great example. So thank you for what you do and you continue to do. Mr. President, this is probably the best time of the night. I always enjoy this to hear about what's going on in the various schools. So again, thank you so much for all of your hard work and the example that you shared with all of us as being givers to our community. Thank you very much.
I'm not nearly as eloquent as he is, but I would like to just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that you did in fact beat Purdue, both men's basketball and women's basketball and football. So that's all I got.
Well, that doesn't take a lot to follow. How many years did it?
Hey, I don't care.
It's always great to see the families here, you know, coming to support their children, husbands, wives. Who's being honored? Like Jeff said, that's a great part of the evening. Austin, my wife Jill went on and on about how great a human being you are. And so congratulations. She said, you really deserve to be honored and I'm sure you'll do great in the future. So best of luck. It's great to see some of the high school teachers here to be a part and be a part of the staff that they work with and some of the young people. So thank you guys and thank you all for coming.
Congratulations to the students and staff. This is the best part of the night. Little extra special congratulations to Jody, Jody Mahan. She was in the Elk State Hoop Shoot in Knightstown about a couple of weeks ago. She was one of six girls in the state. Congratulations.
All the teachers and administrators, spring is around the corner and I know that this time of year is going to get busy and field trips and sporting events and track and golf and baseball and, and spring concerts and everything else. So hang on and let's get through March and April and we'll grow from there. And this was from Mr. Davis. He told me he was going to miss the board meeting because he was going to Disney World. And so all I asked was, I see a picture of Jeff with Mickey ears on, okay? So it's a missed event. And Mr. Davis has shown me not just Mickey, he had Minnie ears on. If you don't know Jeff Wada, he is not in this happy place. So thank you to all the people who were the students of the month and the people of the month and their schools and good luck.
Principals, I want to thank you for taking the time this weekend to come and visit with us at the school board and tell us how things are going in your buildings. That's always a good thing to hear, to help us, you know, hopefully make some wise decisions as we move forward. Austin, I was, I taught for 36 years. And it's kids like you that kept me going for 36 years. And I think every teacher will tell you, it's not how a kid starts that we care about. It's how they finish. And you're an example of how we like to see our students finish. So thank you for doing that. And I'm sure we'll have plenty of teachers who are happy to see that you got this award tonight. So thank you. Take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent. Yes, we have the consent items. I am seeking the board's approval of the minutes of the February school board meeting, personnel report, donations and claims and payroll.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the consent items. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Curriculum materials request for the 25-26 school year. I seek the board's approval for the adoption of three additional educational resources. That will greatly benefit all of our students. Amplify ELA for sixth grade. Typing.com for grades K through six. And Studies Weekly for grades K through six, social studies. I seek the board's approval of those curriculum materials.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the curriculum materials. Any discussion?
What is weekly for K six? So like the old weekly reader from fifty years ago?
Yes, but it's social studies based.
I hate to date myself.
Yeah, it's got, it usually has a theme each week. Mary, where are you?
It depends on the grade level. It's based on the grade level, social studies standards for that grade. And each one of the weeks has a different standard that they are different. Like in sixth grade world history, they start, they talk about the different parts of world history. They work their way up.
I just want some clarification, just to go into my matrix.
It's really good nonfiction reading. And that nonfiction reading helps prepare them for the almighty IREDA.
Okay, alright. I assume elementary principals? What do you want?
I bet it wasn't the kids that lobbied for it.
Mostly pushed by the elementary teachers that asked for it and wanted it back.
This is what they want.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Rush County Schools Policy for Meal Charging and Procedures in Unpaid Meals. Annual Board Packet was information from Food Service Director, Mr. Tony Osberger. He has cleaned up some misinformation and had set policies and procedures throughout the corporation on meal charging and how we handle unpaid meals. I seek the board's approval of the RCS policy for meal charging and procedures in unpaid meals. Also, Tony is here if you have any questions for him.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Is this about beyond people getting free lunch?
Yes. How many, how big a dollar amount is this? Does he get the unpaid meals? Because it said, you know, after so long, we went to collections and is that something you have to do regularly?
So basically, we just, we're part of a survey and process of a survey. And we had to turn in our uncollectible meal cost right now. So we're right in around the $7,000 range. And that's fluid, it moves daily because, of course, people pay it. And then, so basically, it is going to be, we used to take, go to collections where it's published. Now it would go to a collection agency. And so it's not published locally or anything like that when you go to small claims court. And there's no cost to the school corporation. It's a government, we're considered a government entity. And the cost is passed down to the person that's being collected upon. And so that's basically, it cleans it up for us. And what we do is we look at it monthly. And then we'll send out notices. Each building has a different person that's in charge of that. And we'll send a notice out by email. Sometimes there's calls made, et cetera, on that. Or we ask them if there's a possibility of going free and reduced meals too.
Pardon, is that just not accepted or?
Oh, the free and reduced?
Yeah.
Some people do, have declined it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know a percentage that has done that. But some people do decline it. Some people, you know, we have a few that we're in the process now of getting it free and reduced.
I know where I taught at, they tried to encourage those who could fill out the paperwork. And sometimes they just wouldn't want to do it.
It seems like if you couldn't pay your lunch and free and reduced is an option, that would be a problem.
And we look at that quarterly, free and reduce. And suggested to people that they take a look at that because circumstances change with people. And basically, the verbiage you see in here is basically from the IDOE on how meals, you know, we can't deny meal, et cetera. So a lot of the verbiage is in here and it's taken from their verbiage with the IDOE and USDA.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is important dates. March 24th through the 28th is spring break. The central office will be closed on 3/28/2025. April 3rd, important day, kindergarten preregistration, kindergarten roundup on April 3rd. Also, our school board meeting is moved from Tuesday to that Thursday, April 3rd at seven o'clock here at central office. April 12th is the RCHS prom. April 13th is the Rotary Top Ten Celebration in the RCHS cafeteria at 2:00 p.m. And April 21st is a snow makeup day.
You don't want to school board meeting on April 13th?
Nope. Full and enough. Donations?
We did that with.
Did you do donate?
Please and payroll.
Anything else?
Ready for administrative report.
Administrative report. Mr. Peters.
Okay. In no particular order. We had our annual bus inspection a couple of weeks ago and have to report that all buses passed. You know, it goes, Stan and Jamie just cannot get enough credit. They just keep our buses in pristine condition. And when the inspections are happening, they're checking all the components of a bus. And they're, and our state troopers getting underneath, shining a light, listening for leaks, doing all the things. And he just knocks them out because the buses are in such good shape. So shout out to both of those guys for being able to do that. Also, we're always hiring. So I'll put that plug in there again. If anyone wants to get their CDL, drive a bus and you're sane of mind, well, thank you. Maintenance and grounds moving on. It's, we're gearing up for spring sports season. And believe it or not, I'm ready to get cutting some grass out this winter. This winter was long and tiring and taxing on all aspects of maintenance and transportation. So happy to get ready for spring sports season. At Point Cloud, we're still here, I confirm. I think the first spring practice starts the 10th of March, hardly.
No, it's already started.
Has it?
Track starts in February.
Oh, well, is that indoor track or is that outdoor? Does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay. So anyways.
And tennis has started too because my daughter will tell you that because she's a tennis girl.
Okay, got it, got it, okay. So also, in some of our projects that I just want to reference for the public. We are finalizing an intercom system or a camera system, Memorial Gym. I've got some insurance inspections that we're trying to get through. Our grounds guys totally rebuilt two of our trailers, put new wood decks in those and repainted them. We've got maintenance of kitchen appliances. And also, we're looking at a redesign of our HVAC and our networking room. That Brad and I have talked about, that's not cheap, but nonetheless, it's necessary to keep our systems up and going. So that's kind of a rundown of what we got.
Mrs. Kramer.
Hello, I have, you've got a packet with all the financial stuff in it. Also, I was just going to highlight the interest because we moved the money from the rainy day to the trust Indiana. And then it tells you that we gained $6,171 by doing that last month. So between the two rainy days total, it's almost $30,000 or so. That's all I have. Just got something else.
And that stood year-to-date, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Mr. President, I have a question. HRS, where is that under? Did I miss it on this report or is it camouflaged? Where is that at?
It comes out of Title II funds.
What, Title II funds?
Yes.
Do you know the amount?
Not off the top of my head.
Is that something we can access?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that for all of our participating buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Mr. Anderson.
Alright, get your calendars out. Our Future Champions Day will be Friday, May 9th. Then our rain date is Thursday, May 15th. And I'll be over at the middle school track. It was a great event last year and hopefully we have the same weather that we did last year. Just a quick update, IIEP, that's our state information system that we use. Currently, it's with PCG and it's going over to Power School next year. So they are transitioning to that. And it is a separate platform than the Power School that had the ransomware issue, the hacking. So it is a separate system than that. But we're starting that transition this spring. And then over the summer, and then we will start up with that in the fall, next school year. And it will be syncing with Harmony so that, I know a lot of people have asked me, does that mean we have to switch to Power School? No, it will sync with Harmony, so that's all. Thanks.
Dr. Malik.
Elementary summer school dates have been set to May 27th to June 9th. Elementary principals and I are going to meet again after IREDA has been administered before spring break to get enrollment numbers. And then we'll update food services and transportation. And we're still working on the new elementary curriculum guides. We only have the common assessments left and grades five and six have been done. So we should have the rest done by the end of the year. Working on with the elementary principals on that. Other than that, I've been scheduling summer and/or early August meetings for teachers for our new curriculum programs. And then I'm just working on stuff for next year. So I'm already looking at new teacher orientation, a structural coaching plan, and then, you know, that's pretty much it.
Mrs. Innis.
Since I've been here last time, we've been awarded four out of five schools, some additional Project Lead the Way training grants. So we had received and have not spent the money yet for equipment in Project Lead the Way, over $135,000 to the schools. So we won't have to take any of the money in those grants to train people or retrain people. Also, we've been, with Dr. Malik and I, have been arranging a school visit, April 3rd, to the Batesville schools. We went to a Project Lead the Way showcase a couple of weeks ago and talked to the administrators there. And we're going to take some teachers and administrators from here to visit them. They just implemented Project Lead the Way in their middle school. So we're going to ask them questions about how they vertically align, what they like, what they don't like, so we can use our grant money wisely. And this is the type of year where I'm looking at the different buckets within the grants and possibly asking for amendments. We received some carryover funds from Title I. So I'm in the process of a Title I amendment to be able to spend that money. Also, working on state reports and spent quite a bit of time leading up to today, which was SAT day. If a student was throwing an error in what's called a graduation cohort, that deems us at a state level if they're a junior and they withdrawn from our school, but they had an error of an unknown. So I had to go back several years for our freshmen, sophomores, juniors and seniors to see what those errors were and how we could get those taken care of because we didn't want to count against the high school on the state reporting. And I'm working on a training this summer for office staff because Harmony has upgraded and will be continuing to upgrade with the new graduation changes. So we'll be able to use that product. We want to know what those changes are and use it efficiently. So that's what I have in the works.
Are there any of the federal grants we're still waiting on that we've been promised and we haven't got?
Yes, I applied, I think it was in September, seventh or ninth, I forget, for our Title IV funds and they have not been released. I belong to a state PLC of grant coordinators. There's about 180 of us throughout the state. And I, we meet once a month. Last month, the DOE presented to us and said they had released four on a trial basis. We're using a new platform called PeaceVest and it hasn't been working out real well on their end. So we don't have that money yet. And it'll probably be time to start applying for those again this spring, so.
So you're applying for them again before you?
Probably, yes, yeah. And some of the grants are 27 months, some of them are 24 months. Title is basically just a 12-month grant. So there are times, like right now, Mr. Anderson and I are working out of two special ed grants at the same time. So we might drain one bucket, which might be personnel. But yet, we still have benefits bucket open in the 24 grant, but we're pulling personnel out of the 25 grant. So, and that's just how the portal grants kind of works.
Mr. Ronnebaum.
Okay, so last week our e-rate meeting came to a close. We have selected our vendor for internet service provider and are getting three times our speed at last money with a new contract. We're going to start off at six. And if we find out that our network is getting congested, then we will increase up from there. Even the max ISP speed we can get at 10 is still going to be cheaper than what we're currently paying. So we're going to lock that price in for the next five years. That will not take effect until July 1st. And prior to July 1st, they will be onsite doing an evaluation of our equipment to make sure that they don't need to do any determinations. That way, when we're ready to turn speeds up on July 1, it happens right at midnight and it's a smooth transition. We've also been tightening the reins quite a bit on what students can and can't do on the Chromebooks. We seem to have a lot of good support from administration and teachers on that, on things we're blocking and really tightening the reins on some things. So that way, they're using Chromebooks for educational purposes, so. And then we are expecting most of our equipment to be in middle to, or to start to the middle of April to get ready for summer deployment for Chromebooks and the seven through 12 teacher devices. So that's all I have.
Thank you to all the administrators for your reports this evening. Anything further, Mr. Superintendent?
I have nothing, Mr. President.
Excuse me, anything else?
Can you update some of the RDS project, Mr. Jameson?
Actually, we have our biweekly meeting tomorrow. Meeting with all the contractors, so I'll have an update and I can give that to you. But everything seems to be going well. We had obviously framing of the four kindergarten classrooms, so it's good to move into that. Case work and stuff for spring break. So I'll have more of an update all included in my Friday report to you.
Excellent, so we're on schedule?
Everything's on schedule, right?
Budget looks good?
Budget looks good.
Who is in charge of updating the website?
Idia Burris.
Could we get our page updated or are we going to wait till we get photos?
Of the construction project?
No, 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 I'm sorry, of the members?
We're waiting on for members to be, the new pictures and stuff. But I can have emails, we'll just put a logo and stuff.
You could update that with the email for contacts.
Gotcha.
Motion for our chairman?
Yes.
Anything to turn?